Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our translation services, President Bogus.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, we will reconvene to open session to vote on expulsion matters. I move approval of stipulated expulsion agreement of matter number twenty twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three dash number sixteen from the district for the remainder of the fall semester twenty twenty-two suspended enforcement of the expulsion for spring twenty twenty-three. Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, Mr. Seal?
Yes. Commissioner Alexander.
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb.
Yes.
Commissioner Matamidi.
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward.
Yes.
President Bogus.
Yes.
Seven ayes.
Close session readout and two. In the matter of student S V N versus S F U S D O A H, numbers two zero two one one zero zero three four zero. The board by a vote of seven yeses gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. In the matter of Angela R. Doctor versus San Francisco Unified School District, San Francisco Superior Court case number C G C dash two zero dash five eight four two one seven. The board votes by a vote of seven yeses gives the authority of the district to pay up to the stipulated amount. And that concludes our readout from closed session. And now I will read a little description of the workshop we're going to be participating in today. And then we will go to our consent item. As I call this meeting to order, I'd like to make a note about this meeting. The board has committed to spending half of its time at board meetings focused on student outcomes. When planning how to accomplish this, we determined to have one meeting a month as a workshop and one meeting is a regular meeting. One meeting a month is a regular meeting. Tonight is a workshop meeting. You will notice that we don't have a superintendent's report, student delegates' reports, or board members' reports. And there is no general public comment on the agenda. This is so we may focus our time on having an in-depth discussion on student outcomes. Okay, that's background context on what we're doing today. And with that, we will go to item D, which is the consent calendar. And with that, we have one item on the consent calendar. Is there any items withdrawn or corrected by the superintendent?
Should we move it? I like, I'll move, I'll move the item.
Second.
Thank you for that. Okay, and so are there items that could be severed by board members?
I'd like to sever item one. I have some questions.
For this discussion, please use your.
I'm sorry. It would require, my understanding of the rules was that it would, as long as four people, four commissioners want to sever, it would then be tabled for the next meeting. We would not discuss because staff was not noticed that they should be prepared to discuss.
I thought that was when the ten days notice was given. I wasn't aware that that was going to apply to the special meetings as well.
I'm gonna ask commissioners to withdraw from their comments. I'm gonna ask the superintendent to respond, and then we will figure out how best to proceed.
I'm happy to.
So let me, let me, sorry, I'll just, I'll say this, as, again, we're working on new practices and procedures. So in the previous board workshop, when we published the calendar, we noted that for these board workshops, you won't see these, the typical meeting items, but there may be items on consent when needed because, or there may be items brought forward when, you know, needed because they're time-sensitive, or there's compliance issues because they need to be submitted by a particular time. So this one is being brought forward because it is a time-sensitive issue related to student safety. And so that's why this is on, on here. And I guess we didn't, we haven't. Yeah, so I think, you know, discussing this for, for this one is, is fine. And then as we get to future ones, if this happens, we'll have to figure out the communication around that. So with that said.
Yeah, let's continue with comments for Commissioner Alexander, then we'll pivot forward.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think I had a little discomfort around this because it's not a regular meeting and because public, members of the public, if they're expecting our business items at a business meeting, and we don't do the ten days in advance, I, I just, I feel like it creates confusion, right? Because if we're saying we want to be really rigorous about our board policies, want to have these things ten days in advance, this is a no-bid contract, I think there's probably good reasons for it. But I just, I feel, I felt uncomfortable seeing this on the agenda three days before because it, it feels like it undermines what we're trying to do as a board. And I'm not talking about the substance of this item, but just process-wise. So I guess I just would like to raise that as a concern.
Okay, yeah, and again, I think this is something we're going to need to work through because with only, you know, with only one regular meeting a month, and what, we did follow all the, all the appropriate procedures, it was public. But I understand what you're saying. And even at the last meeting, like I am, the last workshop, we talked about having the student progress reports available twelve days in advance. So we're working on that for the next student outcomes report because of the back and forth, but this one was a time-sensitive one.
So my understanding, our process that we're going to have one consent calendar a month, and every contract that we need to review is going to be in that one ten-day period prior to the meeting? Is that really feasible or tenable for us as a board? Every, everything we need to review is going to be once a month? And the only time the public has to comment on things is once a month? Is that what I'm understanding in our new rule set? This is part of why I keep saying that the budget work we're about to do, for example, should be in a budget committee meeting, or maybe an ad hoc meeting as a whole. We shouldn't be giving up one of our meetings a month. We should be discuss, this is the, the business of the board, to do this kind of stuff. Emergencies happen more than once a month. To, this is very limiting.
Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Fisher. I, I think we, we need to rest with that. What I would suggest that we do right now, and I'm gonna look to the superintendent to see if you have an objection. I, I think there seems to be a, a motion for us to sever this item for discussion so that we have the ability to vote on it. I know that our rules right now are we kind of sever and push to the next meeting. I think with this being the only item on our agenda and this kind of being an urgent thing, it may make sense for us to sever it, discuss it, and then take a vote to see if we feel like it's something it makes sense for us to pass. And that way, we can kind of create the proper forum to discuss it and give public comment as well on the item. So I guess, is, it's, I know that Commissioner Fisher introduced a motion to sever for discussion. Is there a second for that motion?
And so you're, I'll second it if that's following your suggestion. Yeah, I'll second it then.
Okay, and is that something, Justin, that we could have a roll call vote if people support severing?
For severing the item, Commissioner Alexander?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Lamb?
No.
Commissioner Matamidi?
No.
Commissioner Sanchez?
No.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
No.
President Bogus?
Yes.
That's four nays. It fails.
Okay, so then we will not sever it for discussion, and we will have a roll call vote on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Student delegate Hanson?
Yes.
Student delegate Konostar? Commissioner Alexander?
No.
Commissioner Fisher?
No.
Commissioner Lamb?
Yes.
Commissioner Matamidi?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Vice President Weissman Ward?
Yes.
President Bogus?
Yes.
Bye-bye, it passes.
All right, thank you for that. And with that, we will move to item E, informational item on the budget workshop. At this time, the board will move from our formal seats to sitting around the table. And maybe we will give ourselves a five-minute break to transition over.
I'll have the microphone.
Okay. That's more sensitive, right? Yeah.
This is my move. This is my board meeting move right here. Then I will feel. Oh, yeah, then I will feel.
And we will reconvene after on shortly, and I will pass it to Superintendent Wade.
Thank you. Good evening again, everyone. Glad to be around the table with you for part two of our budget workshops. And yes, typically, we want these workshops to be around student outcomes, but we did calendar having a budget workshop in December and then one in February. So as a reminder, for those who weren't here in, in December, that during that workshop, we talked through what it means to develop a budget that would be aligned with our vision, values, goals, and guardrails. And so you have in front of you, this is what we read last time, superintendent schools, boards, and budgets. This is from the Council of Great City Schools. And A.J. Krabell had facilitated a conversation among us about what it would take to develop a budget that did that. And recognizing that that's going to be a multi-year process, but are looking at, but giving guidance for how we can get started on doing that and steps we should be taking immediately, and then the work that needs to be done to have that in place for the long term. So that was our first workshop. So that was more independent of our particular financial situation. This workshop is scheduled where we're going to do three things. We're going to, one, share some work we're doing to align our current budget to our vision, values, goals, and guardrails, so we can have a baseline. Two, hear from our fiscal experts and as well as district staff on the current state of our budget, and a little bit of just budget development in general. And also, the governor had released his proposed budget, so an overview of the implications of that. And then third, I'm going to share a bit about the budget development at the district level. Again, to be more in line with our work around our vision, values, goals, and guardrails. So joining us for the presentation, I'll let them all introduce themselves, and we'll get started with the presentation. So we have first Anne Marie Gordon.
Hi, everybody. Anne Marie Gordon, interim head financial officer.
Delia Deshawn, one half of the fiscal expert team.
Pamela, the other half of the fiscal expert team.
Andy Clark, interim associate superintendent of business services.
Great. So see if it goes next. All right. So again, we are working on aligning our budget to our vision, values, goals, and guardrails. And when we present our budget, have a budget narrative that identifies how we are working in each area and what expenditures we have for each area. And so one of the things A.J. had said is, we want to have a clear baseline to understand, are we increasing our investments as we move into next year now that we have our goals? Because remember, this year's budget was established before having our goals and guardrails. And so up here are the, the goals and guardrails we're working towards. And then if you go to the next slide. So here's what we're doing to establish the baseline. So just sharing with you an example, and this is, we'll pause to give feedback, our questions, to see, you know, if this makes sense. So in our LCAP, we have, for each area, we have different actions. So area one is about, around joyful learning. And so 1.05 is our actions around college and career readiness. And then you see a overview of the action, and then you see total funds. So this action includes work we're doing around AVID, our career pathways, and middle school for, and then, sorry, our middle school courses for English learners, dual enrollment, a few of these areas. So we've estimated that in the budget, there's about eighteen million dollars spent towards this action. Okay, so what we're gonna do, so that's already in the LCAP, it's in our public document, you go on the website and see that. So now, if you go to the next slide, our, then, Anne Marie, if you want to share the analysis that we're doing?
Sure. So to start with the baseline, because we have the majority of our budget already mapped to our LCAP this year, where the plan is to go through and take each of our LCAP actions and align those to our goals and guardrails. So that rather than starting completely from scratch, we're working with, right, this, this plan that we already have in place, where we've already aligned and indicated how our resources align to that work. And then sort of bringing the goals and guardrails along with it, so that we can begin, we can use the budget mapping that is in the LCAP to get us started. And so here is, right, the example that for looking at this action around college and career readiness, right, we did choose one that had a clear alignment as an example to goal three of college and career readiness. And in particular, also named some of the interim goals around ninth grade early warning indicators and college, college credit coursework or a CTE pathway. We also, on, on the next slide, chose an action that that is a critical action within the work that we do, supporting core operations across the district. And to which we have a significant amount of funds allocated, but to which there isn't quite as clear a map to the goals and guardrails. Because the goals and guardrails are very student-centered, right, achievement, opportunity-focused, the goals and guardrails don't quite as clearly align to this particular action. And so as we go through this work, it's going to be an opportunity to really identify as, as we discussed at the meeting in December, what it would look like, where we're lined up, where we're not, and how we move towards better clarity and transparency around how resources are being used to accomplish the goals and honor the guardrails.
So by the end of the, so we're doing this over the next two months, maybe, and then by the end of it, we should be able to see, well, we think for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, in our budget, we had X dollars allocated to our goals that represent Y percentage of our budget. And so then, as we're planning for next year, you know, we'll see how that, that shifts. So again, wanted to share, you know, still working through this, like actually got an email communication, someone had seen this and said, wait a second, is the work that's being done around advanced placement, you know, referenced in this, and you know, it's a broad description. And so these descriptions, I may not get every single line item expenditure, so we're gonna need, I, I'll forward you that email. We're gonna need to figure out how to capture that, but at least we have something to work off of that, you know, to establish the baseline for what we're spending on our goals. So we'll pause here, see if there's any questions or comments about this process, and then we'll move to the, to part two.
I have a question, and a question. I like what I see here, just kind of like the direction and the alignment. I'm curious to what your thinking is around how we're evaluating the effectiveness of the dollars spent and the impact of the dollars spent, and kind of who within the organizational structure is going to be kind of responsible for kind of monitoring that related to the goals and guardrails, or kind of the, the fund area, or how we're kind of categorizing it.
Now, thanks for that question, because I should, I didn't recognize, or make explicit, this is only putting, letting us know how much we're spending. You're absolutely right. It's not saying whether what we're spending it in is effective or not. And this has been through the progress monitoring process, when we start looking at how are we doing towards our goals, that we'll be able to establish some criteria around effectiveness of those expenditures. So that's where, when I, when the AJ's talking, it's going to take a while to fully build that this out. The, it's, it is more straightforward, particularly with, since we've talked about, we don't have, you know, consistent systems to evaluate our, all of our programs and, and activities. It's easier to just say what is being spent on than saying how effective it is. But for us to be a fully, you know, to do this work well, we need to answer that question.
Let's go, Vice President Weissman Ward will go around this way.
I also agree with President Bogus that I appreciate how we are working towards being more intentional and in alignment. I have a question about the, the column that's goal and guardrail, for the example that you gave, and I know that this is, we're working this out. I see these, I see goal and interim goals. Can you give an example of what, what would that look like if there's, do you anticipate there being guardrails in the same column? Because that column does see goal and guardrails, I just, I'm trying to understand what that looks like.
Yeah, so, so I, that's a good question, because for some, it's pretty, like for the, serving the whole child, you know, we have a proposed interim guardrail around monitoring chronic absenteeism. So seems like that could be in there. For the one about, like, working with our CBO partners, not totally sure how we'd measure that. And then also realized, I don't think we asked A.J. to come to this meeting, but I'll follow that up as a question to him. I guess I was assuming there'd be some guardrail allocation, because again, some of it's clear, like some of it's also related to our use of instructional frameworks, so like professional development around that seems to be aligned to that, that guardrail, but I'll clarify.
Can I pass for now and come?
Just following up on the guardrails, I think that's also going to be really important to the community, to be able to see where the investments are to advance both not only the goal, but the guardrails. Because that was certainly something that we heard when we went into community was they were absolutely, you know, and that was why we landed on the goals, the student outcome goals that we did. And at the same time, it was also very important to community that the guardrails were going to be visible to through our investment. So I just wanted to just highlight it and of demonstrating that.
Yeah, and this maybe goes along with, so many colleagues ask, I guess my question is how is this strategic as opposed to technical? Because it feels to me like it's more like a technical process of saying, like, here are all the things that we could possibly say, we spend that's related to college and career, but it doesn't, there's no theory of action around, like, to me, this doesn't feel like it's aligned, because we haven't said, based on this action, we believe we will increase our college and career readiness from X to X, right, X to Y, excuse me. Yeah, so like, this is just like, okay, scattershot, all these things we do that might have some connection, but we're not even making an argument that they're gonna, that they're gonna help us improve our achievement of the goal. So that's where it just concerns.
Well, no, but I think that's the point, because this is the twenty-two, twenty-three LCAP. So what I'm supposed to bring back when we bring back the budget is some arguments about why now investing in these areas will, in different, you know, either in the same areas or different areas will lead towards that goal.
I guess I would just, maybe, then the feedback would be, I wouldn't argue that eighteen million dollars is spent on goal three yet. Like, maybe it's like, there's eighteen million dollars of things that are associated, that could be associated. Well, I think there's a difference in.
As, okay, see, as you're saying that, I guess, and maybe we should have had A.J. here, because this is, I, I think, I'm gonna say another way your question. Right? Yeah, because I'm gonna say another way for your question, another asking your question, right? That eighteen million, let's just take dual enrollment, right? It's, it's paying, well, I'm gonna make this up for a second, but let's say, you know, it's paying for the dual enrollment classes or the instructor that's providing dual enrollment. So on one hand, you know, that's a program we offer that works towards college and career. Is it an intentional strategy? You know, that, you know, but the strategy. You know, that, you know, but the strategy, you may be expanding dual enrollment to be here, here and here, because it's only offered there, there and there, you know? So I do think the question is like, you're, I think what you're saying is, how do we know among our whole big budget? What's just ongoing expenditures versus what's actually going to the, going to our strategies to reach our goals? Like we're, you know, we're going to have, you know, another, yeah, we're going to have, you know. Second, we're going to do this work, we were doing this work before, and not all that work is going to stop. So yeah, how do we make that distinguishing difference?
Can I add one thing?
Yeah.
I think also the way that, I think the way that AJ had articulated, the process will build over the spring is that. Will, as as we go through budget development and will, right, I think that's technically part three. But as we talk about our plan for budget development for the upcoming spring, bless you. Right, we will be going through the process of. Of, you know, essentially remapping to the goals and guardrails. And so what this will do is give us a baseline to compare against what is developed in the spring. With the idea of then being able to articulate. How we become more aligned moving forward. So I think it's, it is, it does mean today is preliminary and sort of this where we start, but that it's going to help kind of chart the course.
I think I have questions about the scope of this, the example used here is LCAP. But we have PEEF funding, we have Title I funding, we have special ed funding, we have all these other fund sources. Is the same work being done in those areas as well? I think one of our issues historically has been that all of our different. At least it feels to me as a former member of the LCAP task force, like. That's one silo, PEEF CAC is a completely different silo, right? All these different funding sources, we. Historically have reported from a compliance standpoint instead of an overall budget understanding. So is that, are those silos being broken down as part of this work?
They are, there's definitely going to be ongoing work, knowing that all of these different groups, like these different advisories are active. And going through their own, right, their own kind of annual processes each year. But I think. The first, I guess last year, the first year that we came back to the LCAP after COVID. The format of the LCAP did change so that we could report more clearly on all of our funding rather than just LCFF. So even though we're still, you know, in the process, I think of getting fully acquainted with that. And how that really brings all of our different funding sources into the LCAP. It means that for the purposes of what is mapped in the LCAP, it actually does include the majority of special education funding. It does include PEEF funding, so it is a more comprehensive representation of all of it. But obviously, still, that that is still a lot to grapple with.
Are the PEEF CAC, the SPED CAC, the LCAP, LCAP task force, are they, how are they involved in this work?
Well, they, this work, this is again, kind of looking back and such as aligning, then then when we do our planning for the future, they'd be involved in. Are they, and when we're planning for this coming year, they're involved through the LCAP process.
But the PEEF CAC isn't involved in LCAP, I mean, so that's why I'm saying we're very much siloed.
No, we do have representation from the PEEF CAC on the LCAP task force now.
I just am asking a clarifying question, thank you, about this evening. Because I actually thought AJ was going to be facilitating. So how, can you level set as far as what, what you'd like to accomplish over the next couple of hours? Because this is a thick slide deck and it, there's many different facets to it. And I just. And we have experts here and I want to utilize our staff and.
Yeah.
CDU rep time, so can you, can you direct us to how you see this conversation being, what's the agenda?
I think AJ maybe has joined as well. But but I will say, most of the time is not meant to be spent on this, so thank you for asking. So this was just to say, here, you know, we had this conversation last time, here's where we're going with this, just get some reactions, got some good reactions. Move on, most of the time then will be with Elliot and Dr. Clark and Anne Marie. Presenting about the, again, a little bit of budget 101 and just make sure we're all on the same page with that. And then also what we heard from the governor's budget, that should be the meat of it. At the end, I want to share a little bit about where I'm going with budget planning based on everything we heard. Again, there could be some reactions and comments, but the meat should be coming up shortly. So you know other questions or comments and reactions to this portion, I think we're good, move ahead. I will hand it back to you. Okay, great, so if you go to the next slide. There, there were our clarifying questions about. Okay, so again, this is a budget fiscal overview. So we got the overview from AJ around just in general, regardless of whether you're in California, Texas. You know, Pennsylvania, like if you want to be developing a budget that's in alignment with goals and guardrails, here's what you need to think about. But we are in California where there's particular rules and processes that we need to follow when developing our budget. And so that's where we have our team here who are going to present on this and we'll have discussion. And for this one, there are a lot of slides, so I mean, I feel like if there is a question that comes up, you know, after slide five, if someone wants to signal. That's fine, that's where there's the more, you know, the workshop.
So maybe not on each slide, but maybe every five slides or so, we'll kind of queue things up.
Yeah.
Don't say then we'll go back to your slide, your particular question, but we, so we'll stack people up and kind of queue and check in periodically. So we can get questions answered.
Yeah. Okay, so next slide. Okay, I think this was Elliot's slide, he liked to give us the money.
Yeah, I like the money and you do too. So I sometimes like to use cute slides for big ideas. So you do have buckets of money in two respects. You have a lot of money, comes from a lot of sources, but it's also in in buckets. So you can't, there are certain buckets, let's just say the front one, you can put in the back two buckets. But you can't exchange the back two with the front two or with one another. So part of what we'll talk about tonight is what you do with your funds. Some of them are restricted, some of them are unrestricted, like that front bucket. And what that means in terms of your budget. So as we walk through this, we'll talk about your role as a board, your decision making, what a budget is. And particularly in a school district, that when you have various sources of money with different regulations. How it has to be used and where we end up as a fiscal concern. And I'll leave that thought hanging, and I think it goes to Ms. Anne Marie Gordon, or no, it goes to Dr. Clark.
Next slide is.
Okay, you have a few slides.
So what is a budget? In its most simple terms, it's a plan for how much money you have and how you're going to spend it the next year. It's a typical form of revenues and expenditures. But in a school district and relating to the discussion you just had, your budget. Really reflects the philosophy, goals of the governance team and administration. In California, it's integrated with the local control and accountability plan. And I probably should have added that in San Francisco, it's also integrated with your PEEF and other sources of money. But together, the budget, the LCAP function. As a communications device and a strategic planning device. Because your budgeting in California is always at least over a three year period where you're looking at revenues and expenditures. And you're projecting the things that fall into that budget over that period of time. The next slide please. So your responsibilities as a board is. You know, we talk sometimes about the boards with the what, the board says the what, and administration says the how. But in many respects, when you approve the budget, you're at least, you're talking definitely about the what. The goals, where the district's headed, how the money's going to be spent, but it certainly includes the how. How you're going to allocate that money to what programs? You're going to hold public hearings regarding your LCAP. And I believe you also, do you have public hearings on your PEEF? I'm not sure what your regulations are, but you have a committee that deals with it. You're going to approve budget amendments. You're going to receive and certify two interim financial reports, and these are key. It's because of one of those that Pam and I, Pam's not sitting here, but she's here. Are sitting here today as fiscal experts, because you had what was called, called a qualified interim report, and we'll talk about that later. You select an auditor, receive an audit report, and you use the budget document as a citizen communication device. Which means that as, as we go through, we being you, the district. Us as your partners, that that budget becomes a communication device for what you're planning to do with your revenues and your expenditures. Next slide please. Who's, are you talking about the, so this is a standard process, but I'm going to let Dr. Clark explain it in San Francisco.
Thank you, Elliot. So for any school district, there are five required reporting periods, and you see them listed here. The first one is the adopted budget, which looks, which covers the period between July 1th to June 30th of any year. We're actually in the budget development stage now, stage now. The second reporting period is first interim, it goes from July 1 to October 31st. You usually received that report by December the 15th. And what that does is it looks at the adopted budget and captures any adjustments to revenue or expenditures. And reports to the board on your fiscal condition. And then you'll see another time where that same report comes in at second interim, but for a different reporting period, January, July 1st through January 31st. That report comes to the board March the 15th, but it still has the same structure. Estimated actuals is looking in totality at where the district believes it will end the year. That information is a part of the adopted budget. And then last and certainly not least is unaudited actuals, which is where the district actually ended up in terms of revenue and expenditures. That report is captured and reported to the board by December the 15th. All of these reports are required to be board approved and submitted subsequently to the California Department of Education. So I think I turn it back over to Anne Marie at this point.
Okay. So. We have a couple of the slides that I presented at the first interim presentation in December. But to, right, to orient to the structure of both first interim here and what will be a second interim coming in March. Also, in addition to the superintendent's boards and budgets, hard copies, everyone has hard copies of our. Form one and multi-year projections from the first interim report. But essentially, right, this is the summary, the the standard format that we use to show here the comparison between the adopted budget. And the first interim, for second interim, we'll see first compared to second, right, we'll add that column. And as Dr. Clark said, it's an update on our revenue projections. And our presentation will highlight anything of significance that we need to be pointing out and paying particular attention to. And. Similar to the presentation and discussion in December, here, looking at this particular moment in time, SFPUSD at first interim. The updates between the revenue. Reflects the finalization of the state budget, which happened after we adopted our budget before first interim. And then the red. Annotates or kind of names the fact that we are deficit spending with. And with fund balance, right, reserves set aside to help stabilize over the next several years. Pam, is there anything that you would like to add?
I'd just like to add that every time you receive a new report, basically, we're giving you what the district knows at that point in time. Has changed from the prior report, and our goal is to reach an amount at the estimated actuals as to what you'll actually end up the year. In many cases over the past several years, the district has ended up with a much larger ending balance. And so that's one thing that we're trying to reconcile and try to get that more closely. To the number that is projected, so that it's not, it's good to have more money, but not if it's just been sitting there. And you could have taken it as some type of a savings and brought it down in during the balance. So we're working on creating that shift in the future reports, so it'll be coming forward to the board. And the deficit spending that you see here, this is your unrestricted general fund. So just want to make a note that this shortfall is created because you have a structural deficit in the unrestricted general fund. So again, one of the items we were tasked with and coming on board was to try to help the district be able to eliminate that structural deficit. And so we are looking very closely, moving into next year's budget at a lot of the vacancies that are budgeted. We want to make sure that everything that is budgeted is going to be spent. Or if it's something that just keeps rolling over, but it doesn't actually get filled. We want to make sure that we can eliminate those positions so that it will help offset some of that structural deficit. Next slide.
So this slide is, is the same.
I'm sorry, go back one more slide.
Oh, yeah. So this slide is the same structure, but it was not included in first interim. But we did, we spent. A good amount of time discussing the restricted general funds during that meeting, and so this is. Rather, is is the restricted side of of our general fund. And moving forward for future presentations, we will include this slide to show the unrestricted, the restricted. And then, right, and then we'll see it all together. So this, you can see. We are not deficit spending in our restricted general funds. The changes to the expenditures and revenue here are in large part the result of new grants coming in after the budget was adopted. And also loading confirmed carryover after we, after we were able to close out the year and see what balances we had available to. Right, to then rely on and draw from for this, this year. In the future, we may see deficit spending in the restricted general fund as we draw down funds that roll over from year to year. But that is more common generally than what you would see in our structural deficit, deficit spending in the unrestricted, on the unrestricted side. If you look at page 22 of the handout that you have, it's the last page of the, the thicker document. That last page has. The resources that currently have balances remaining, so that gives you the restricted funding detail at the first interim report.
Can, can I make a point of void order to, this is not available to the public, this document? Is it, is there a way for it to be attached to the, the agenda at this point? I don't believe it's attached.
Which document are you referring to?
I can, I can send it, it's the, yeah.
It's actually taken from.
The first interim report.
So just if it could be.
Sure.
Quickly reloaded, so.
So Anne Marie, whoever, she can share with me all the data right now.
It is.
I'll share.
It should be.
It should be, but if not, it's the December 13th board meeting is when the first interim was, came here for discussion. So, yeah, but it is an excerpt of the first interim report. And so, yeah, so that gives you more, more detail into the resources and the balances that comprise our restricted. General fund, fund balance. And then in addition to this, because I know that that focuses on the balances, if anyone. Would like to get more of a lay of the land of our full restricted general fund, all of the resources categorized by state, federal, local. The, and the amounts budgeted are included in exhibit seven of our 22, 23 budget book. Pam?
I think you covered everything, Anne Marie.
I, I want to make one point about your restricted revenues. That is not what you plan to get every year. They are sometimes one shot, sometimes expended over three years. So that's why it's separated and it's important to separate. Because it's your unrestricted revenues that by and large are your ongoing. So when we look at things like deficits, our biggest concern is going to be on the unrestricted part. The other concern with the restricted part is some of those are time sensitive. Some must be spent by 2024, some by 2028 and various other years. So there's a few more moving pieces to. There's a few more moving pieces to that, but I just want to make sure you don't look at line B as an ongoing revenue source.
That's the question about. It's okay. Okay, um, this total ending fund balance was projected to be 117 million by the first interim at 169. Is that correct? And then for the second interim, do you expect that to increase even more? On the restricted side.
Right.
Probably not, I would say that currently the 169, if anything, if anything gets spent out of some of the grant money that's come in more recently. The reason it's down in the ending balance is that a plan was not actually budgeted yet. So you may actually see some increased expenditures and a little bit less in that restricted fund balance for some of the. Like the ELOP program and potentially even some of the the S R three funds.
So unless. Say I can. We're working on the second interim report now, so I think we can make sure to. Call out any particular changes. I think the community schools grant is another one where schools have been doing their needs assessment and they had to complete the needs assessment before they could get the funds loaded this year. So that might be a case where the revenue is, right, is. Either received and noted, or the budget increases as we get those funds loaded.
And I'm not sure whether we covered this part or not, but because of the restricted. Balance being such a large amount, in part, that's because S F U S D has received a lot of money for state and federal stimulus funding. And that plan is to spend it down over a multi-year period. So it's kind of set aside with that plan in mind. It'll show up as expenditures as the years progress.
Commissioner Alexander had a question, Commissioner Bishop.
Yeah, just real appreciation for adding the restricted funds. And it would be good, I don't know if there's any way moving forward, if we could get to Pam's point and Elliot's like. Some sense of where are the areas in that restricted funding, since it's such a large amount like P E F or other areas that might be continuing. And then the areas where we anticipate. But yeah, that is what is one time and we probably won't get it again, I mean, just the big buckets, right? So that we have, because again, when we look at it's half our budget.
Right.
It's a big, it's a lot of money that we need to really understand, and yet we don't want to rely on it if it's if it's going to go away, so.
Right. Yeah, we can definitely build on that.
And my question is just, I think more general in regards to grants. Many of these grants that we've gotten has been because, you know, they've been pet projects of certain people or departments or whatever. Do we have a more systemic? Like, do we have anyone writing grants for the district or going out looking for these? I mean, like. We walk past a lot of state money because we're not applying for it. Is there? I don't know if that's a priority within our budget group or within our district as a whole.
So we have a grants office, right, are we?
Our fun development.
Well, we have fund development and then Chris Almitron's office, there's some grants go through that, right? But I don't know that we have a coordinated. Rants approach, right?
I don't know what you do, but I'm going to give you the generic answer. Is there will never be enough grants to balance the unrestricted part of your budget. Or to count on for an ongoing basis of moving forward with your visions, values, goals and guardrails. Grants are good sometimes, and sometimes they're not. They come with with strings tied to them. Sometimes you have to have matching funds to them. And you can expend, I'm not saying you shouldn't go after grants and you certainly should go on. Grants that are essentially entitlements that you just have to fill out a form for, but they're not gonna. They may do good things for kids, but they're small, they're small. Pieces of money, small buckets of money.
And we've gotten into trouble and getting to the point where we build programs around grants that then disappear and we have no funding stream for them moving forward. So there is danger in it, I understand, but. Thank you. So the. Next, there we go, yes, so we, I don't know that we need to. Spend, this is the combination of the previous two slides, so this is all resources brought together. I think the one thing that we didn't touch on as much is here, you you can see the full, all of the components of our ending fund balance across both the unrestricted and restricted general funds. But as you go through that list, the only line that is a part of our restricted general fund is that restricted fund balance. So all of the other components are are within our unrestricted general fund. And so, yes, over to Dr. Clark now.
Sure, so let's talk a little bit about a school district's multi-year projection. Next slide, please. So every school district really needs to have a roadmap that outlines where the organization is going. The time that it will take to get there and then the elements that any entity would need to know when they arrive. For school districts, we look to the multi-year projection. And also known as the M Y P, which is required by law under AB 1200. It looks at three years worth of projections, the current year plus two subsequent years. This is where we're looking at known assumptions for revenue and expenditures. We also take into consideration any decisions that we have today or decisions that we know we're in the process of making to look at that projection. One of the things is really important to know is that when you look at a multi-year projection, it's not a stagnant document. It is constantly moving and changing, kind of consider it like a living, breathing document. Because as assumptions change or things with the district change, so will the numbers in the M Y P. But one of the things that that can be true about a M Y P is that it gives you that outlook of where the district is. We talked about deficit spending and some things that are happening with the district. When you look at a M Y P, you'll be able to see what's happening in the current year. And based on the assumptions that have been built in where the district is trending, and that's really important. Next slide, please. So some of the factors that go into the M Y P are listed here, and this is not an exhaustive list, but these are some of the critical things. When it comes to student and student enrollment, increases or decreases will directly impact the multi-year projection as well as average daily attendance. Categorical programs, as we just talked about, the end dates for those programs or, you know, new programs that are coming online. Principal apportionments via L C F F or state apportionments that come down. Collective bargaining agreements and the dollar amounts associated with those agreements. Salary and benefits, salary and benefits for any district is anywhere between 75 to 85, 90% of a district's budget. Staffing ratios, how we allocate staff, not just for certificated staff, but for classified staff. Cost of goods, P G and E, water, you know, anything else where we're purchasing goods, the cost. Increases associated with those will also impact the M Y P. And then if the state decides to give a cost of living adjustment, also known as a COLA, that has a direct impact on the multi-year projection. And so when we look at a school district's M Y P, we're looking at these factors plus any other known factors to determine where the district will land. Under AB 1200, school districts have certain thresholds in terms of, you know, dollar amounts that are available. For this particular district, I believe the reserve level is 2%. And so as you look through and look across those three years, we're we're looking at that. Not just the revenue and expenses, but we're also looking at that trend to see if the district is able to meet that minimum 2% reserve. And so, you know, as the budget is developed and we go into the interim report, it's really important to look at the M Y P to just. Keep a pulse on where the district is trending, because if there's issues that are happening or trouble on the horizon, this is one of the places where you'll be able to see it in the budget.
And so again, we have the multi-year projections from the first interim report. Showing the. 2022, 23 first interim with projections for next year and the following year. In terms of the the substance here and what I think one of the one of the topics we discussed that's included here is. Our salary settlement with United Educators of San Francisco, so that. That ongoing salary increase is incorporated here, but other salary, other negotiations that have been settled over the last. Couple of months or we expect to come in the in the months that come from here have not yet been incorporated. And so what that does mean is that this will change this projection moving forward as the right as we. Enter into new agreements for ongoing expenditures, be they salary or other types of expenses. We are balanced over the next several years by drawing down on the budget stabilization reserve that was established. In part, after the receipt of Prop G payments, the Prop G funds last last winter. And so what it what it means is that we. We do have to be, we do have to be careful and thoughtful about how we proceed and really think carefully and start planning now. For how to offset the shortfall and. Minimize and can, you know, work down the level to which we are deficit spending to. To stabilize, because I imagine that if we were to add another year after this, it would be a. A more challenging scenario to look at.
I just want to make sure, are we all clear on that? We, so we are deficit spending, but we did have this, you know, huge reserve because. Was it Prop G? That's a different Prop G than the one just. Surprised it so closely together, they were both property, but the previous Pop G was wasn't released until just recently. Yeah, so, okay, so make sure we're all clear on that. But so that's why we cover our expenses in this multi-year projection, but that's a a large enough deficit. A structural deficit that we clearly need to take take action, and that's what our fiscal experts will be speaking to next as well.
Yes, I think it is important to, you do have the budget stabilization reserve from Prop G, the 65 million dollars and then also. The 40, sorry, 65 million dollars and then the 40 million dollars in the rainy day reserve. But it is important to know that both of those are one-time fundings that are available to you. So if you have a salary settlement that is, say, 50 million dollars, as it goes through each year, that increases, well, basically. Takes that amount, not only that year, but then the ongoing years after, so that one-time money goes very quickly. And you can see that in the projection in 2324, your budget civilization reserve goes down to 40 million. And then in 2425, you will have basically $96,000 and then your 40 million dollar rainy day reserve. Once you settle negotiations for 2223 and we project that out, that's where you're really going to be able to see that. A lot of your reserves are now gone, you basically have enough for your economic uncertainty. But could very well be upside down, you know, the following year. We will be adjusting. For the second interim, you know, it changes every time the governor puts a budget out there, so what happens is you've got your first interim. Where we didn't know exactly what the COLA was projected for 2324, we had an estimate. That's coming in a little higher, but then 2425 is a little bit lower, so it always kind of balances itself out to some degree. But very important to make sure that everybody's monitoring this and knowing what's happening in the future.
I want to. Take the mic apart here.
Pardon?
Always a little kid in me trying to disassemble things. I I would like a particular attention to lines B and C. Because you have more control over C than B. Your revenues are going to be coming to you based on. Some factors you can control, but they're based on state funding allocations. So when we look at curing, if you will, a structural deficit. We have to look at the expenditures and we'll be talking about some of the major things that go into those later. But that's really key as a board for you to attend to, because the the delta between those two lines is where you get into trouble, frankly.
Any questions?
Yeah, we'll go with Commissioner Lamb and then we'll continue around.
A question I have, I've been superintendent to staff, is. How are our multi-year student? Population. Integrated into our thinking moving forward. And just wanted to get some of the just high level as we initiate this year's budgeting.
I was going to ask if Pam would like to speak to the L C F F calculator.
Okay, so this was mentioned earlier, really the driver of a good portion of your funding, the LCFF funding is from your enrollment in ADA. And with declining enrollment, you know, the state has approved several different funding models that help districts who are continuing to decline. And especially through the COVID period where your ADA percentage was also down. So moving forward, what we're looking at is a continuing decline, maybe not quite as high as it was, you know, previously. But right now, until you get your demographic study that gives us better. Projections on that, it'll be, we're basically going off of what we have to date, and I believe that. Is it, I'm sorry, I can't remember the acronym for the team that works on your enrollment projections. And then basically, though, what we do is we take those enrollment and ADA projections. And there's a calculator that we complete for the LCFF funding. And then it gives us a projection of what your funding will be in the out years using the COLA. Percentages that have been projected by the governor and also by, well, not specifically by the governor, but his team. And then also by School Services of California, as far as what we might be entitled to for a cost of living adjustment on that.
I just, go ahead.
No, and then we are. We did an RFP, we are bringing forward a contract for a firm to do enrollment projections. That has been, I think, a missing piece in the calculations there. So just in my previous district, we would do an annual demographic study. And you need to take that study in your local context, but without that, that's that is is a helpful and necessary piece of information. To make sure those revenues are projected accurately.
Yeah, we've done.
You've had them, you haven't had it for the last few years.
It is part of our last enrollment.
It was, okay.
About. The new enrollment system.
Yeah.
That was a part of the. Yeah.
I do want to acknowledge that, you know, we did not put our put in. Student enrollment or, you know, increasing student enrollment as one of our kind of. Student outcomes or interim goals, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge that and I just do think that. I do think we're going to have to also have it be part of our discussions moving forward, even though it's not named specifically in our. Our established goals, but perhaps in room goals, that might be something that's important since we are also undergoing some of these studies. And it ties, you know, to the multi-year projections, particularly now with the state, you know, in the state legislature, probably moving beyond what. Has been in place over the last couple of years for recovery.
Yes. You know, clearly, our biggest challenge here is the delta that you mentioned between our revenues and our total expenditures. Getting to in the 24, 25 year, 40 million dollars, really, we have to address that and I'm wondering. Superintendent, if you have any initial thoughts about. What we might want to do. Yeah, well, I'll say, as I shared at the end, I'm going to be sharing some budget planning for the district office. I mean, I think that's where we start looking. And then really, it's the interim guardrail that I'm establishing around resource allocation. We had said, one of the guardrails was that we transparently, well, I will not. Do a budget that isn't transparent and clear how we're being equitable and and so on and so forth. And so an interim guardrail I established was to be to, I I said was to have a baseline allocation for schools by the 2425 school year. But I think that's going to be key to understanding of our expenses overall. So right now, interestingly, we have your, if you, we have clearly defined the MTSS support, the supplemental support. But we don't have clearly defined some of the core support and staffing that's at our school. And so that will be, and that I see as the as a key next step. To figure out, you know, again, where we're where. um to figure out, you know, again, where we're where we're uh spending our funds and where we might be more efficient while still providing the services our schools need.
Sorry, sorry to be a broken record on the restricted funds, but at a high level, can you, I was, uh, this isn't, there's no slide on this, but in the multi-year projections that we have. Um, there's a big surplus projected uh in the multi-year projections to where actually in year three, it's almost balanced rather than forty million dollar deficit, but all due to the restricted surplus. So why, why is there such a big surplus projected in the years two and three?
So that I think is actually one of the things that I will um that I'm working with Pam and with Dr. Dr. Clark on kind of improvements in the multi-year projections from first to second interim where I'm I'm learning a little bit, but I think one, one factor there is um something that we can do in the multi-year projections is help to articulate how funds, for example, that we have right now that are for three or four-year period, how we plan for those expenditures to right be budgeted over that time so that it helps to essentially show you that the funds are being used. Right, right now, if the if that is not fully built out, then you don't see the funds being used. So they basically roll over, roll over, roll over and give you a balance that, right, that then may not actually reflect the way that we expect the funds to be used next year or the following, or even be able to more clearly articulate that some of our SRT funds will expire next September. And so anything that's not budgeted right now or that we don't expect to be spent, like, we have to make sure that we're doing that, but then those funds won't be in our fund balance in twenty-four, twenty-five. But in this version of the NYPD, they might um just because of some of that I'd like is my learning how to go through with the level of detail and sophistication to really be right, following the trail of all of those different funding sources and what that means year over year.
Yeah, I want to speak just, I'm sure it's fresh on your memory, but in the fiscal health review, risk analysis, that was one of the issues. And there's kind of a maxim with restricted funds that the best thing you can do is spend your most restricted money in its least restricted way. And one of the um things that the the thick math team found was you were not spending your restricted funds before your unrestricted funds. So the work that Ms. Lazon and Ms. Gordon are doing is very critical to assuring that that those get spent and that that goes right back to your goals, VVG.
Right. I think that um it's important to note that when we when we do the multi-projection, we take the period that we're bringing to you as a financial report. So in this case, it was first interim. And that becomes the base of your next year's out um the projections. So basically, just as they said, what happened is since we say for S R funding, if you have eighteen million dollars and and then S R funding that is sitting in your ending balance, basically because we're not adjusting it and we're going to be working on that up as an expense that we're going to spend maybe nine million of it in twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the balance of it in twenty-four, twenty-five. Those expenditures have not been adjusted yet in this multi-year projection. And when we do that, that's going to reduce your ending balance. So I expect that your second interim budget report will look um especially in the NYPD, different on the restricted side, definitely because of that. You know, making sure we're including those in the out years is expenditures.
Commissioner Fisher, then we'll come back around uh for other issues.
Um, I think that one of the questions I have is just about how we use this to adjust practices within the district. And I think when we, you know, to build on what Commissioner Lamb had mentioned uh with ADA, uh, one of the things I heard at CSBA is we're most school districts now that lunches are free without filling out the 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 form, the multi-use form. We're having a hard time getting those concentration and supplemental grants that show how much, how many low-income students would actually qualify for those free and reduced like cause so uh when we have the potential, especially with federal funding not being renewed for those free and reduced lunches, it that is going to impact our budget shortly if we don't get those multi-use projected, you know, those forms filled, right? I, what is it? The thanks, the multi-purpose family forms that people haven't been filling out because lunch has been free regardless, but that impacts our supplemental and concentration grants for LCFF, right? So, so how do we use information like that to adjust our practices to make sure we're not losing out on millions of dollars? Or how are we reporting that?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a stay why, actually, it's a national problem. And I think that you're not going to solve that alone. There's going to be a lot of people looking at that. And it certainly is a factor that the district needs to look at is how to, what incentive. And you have to be very careful about incentivizing people to fill those forms out. You can't give prizes or goodies or anything. So that will be an issue and we will get to some of the things you can do to remedy the structural deficit later on, but that's a really good point. It actually was not on my list, which it should have been because food usually comes first.
So I think at this point, uh, the superintendent's request that we continue with the presentation, but what I'm gonna do is ask for folks who have comments or questions to get them out, but we'll wait to respond until the appropriate time to get answers if that is okay with both.
Since we're talking on that thread, um it doesn't need a response, but I just wanted to know with universal preschool and transitional kindergarten, um the importance of um really understanding as a district, you know, how are we fully leveraging those restricted dollars? Um, and how are we partnering with the city and really looking at our participation in the mixed delivery system? Um, so that we know that similar to the threat, the theme here is that we're really utilizing as much of the restricted dollars coming from the state. So it frees up the unrestricted to do what we need to do around student outcomes. Um, and just wanting to just know that there's a, I I from the point of view of the city too, there's just a a lot of opportunity with the UPK delivery. But I just haven't, I just wanted to lift that up since that is a major state policy shift.
You know, mine is related to multi-year, there's still more slides on multi. So I'm happy to wait, so.
Let's get through to slide twenty-five before it says fiscal expert and then we'll do another round of questions, just so, because that's got a little bit more of the the data.
Okay, next slide.
There we go. So here, this is um this is just a screenshot of the multi-year projections rather than in the table format that you saw on the previous slide. This is the format that they are presented and reported in in our interim reports. Um, and so what you can see here is essentially going through each of the, each of the years, starting with the current year and then um the right, the change amount that's applied to then build the projections over time. And so this is right, this is the into the into the weeds of what completing the multi-year projection looks like and um building out what we expect to happen over, right, over the budget year plus or current year plus two. Pam, what would you like to add?
That pretty much covers it. I think um we just want to make sure that the board was aware that this NYPD form is included also with all of your reports when you get them for interim and for also um your budget year. And so this breaks it down. This is a combined unrestricted and restricted page, but in addition to that, and you have hard copies of that, you also have just one that is just for unrestricted and one that is for restricted so that you can see on each one of those how those break out. And again, on the restricted side, this is where at your second interim, you're going to see some major changes in what's happening with that ending balance and bringing some of those up as expenditures in the out years.
And maybe one quick call out while we're looking at this slide as an example, I think uh Michelle Alexander, one, you can see that in the in the current year, that first column that starts with the six hundred and eleven million in the LCFF. The federal and other state revenues are quite high and there is a noticeable drop in the twenty-three, twenty-four projection. So off the top of my head, I don't know which funding sources contribute to that, but that is a good representation of receiving funds this year that will be eligible to be used over the next four or three, depending on the particular grant. So it may be that we don't budget for all of it. And so it doesn't show up as new revenue at this point in time, but it would carry over as fund balance as we continue to use it over its eligibility period. Like the learning recovery and block grants, exactly. Next slide please. And so this is just scrolling down on the same form. Um, I think in the to honor our time tonight, I think we can keep moving, but if you have questions, um we're happy to answer them about anything.
Keep going to the next.
And yep, next slide. So this is I this is a high-level um high-level summary of funding sources that, right, the SFUSD that districts in California receive. Um, and sort of the common components, right, of the unrestricted general funds, which would be comprised of our local control funding formula. Um, some of our state funding and some of our one-time block grants, depending on the allowable uses that will determine whether they're considered unrestricted or not. And then on the restricted side, we have federal, state, local, that also includes special education. And I think one particular note for San Francisco is that compared to many districts across the state, we have a lot of local funding. We're very fortunate um to have that support from the city in the form of um parcel taxes, right? Amendments to the like charter DCYF, all of that. So that's something that is in in the big picture. We do a lot of planning around our restricted funding because we do have a large ongoing amount. Um, the one-time has really introduced that that opportunity to think about how best to use all of it um over the next several years. So bond is not part of the the general fund. So, but it is, yes, it is another funding source. That is restricted and um the different bonds are housed in different funds. Um, so this if you were to look at, um, this is fund one, which is our district fund.
We're gonna hold off all questions for another slide.
Yes, yep.
One more slide.
And so for our next slide, we'll go back to Dr. Clark.
Sure. So we've talked a little bit about the multi-year projection as well as the interim certifications. I think one of the things that's just important to note is that when we're looking at either adopting the budget or first interim or second interim, there will be an NYPD. That NYPD will need to show that the district is able to meet its minimum reserve in all three years. And that's important because as we go to the next slide, one more slide, please. We get to the certifications. And so there are three certifications a district can have. The first certification is my favorite certification, which is positive. It means that an or a district can meet its fiscal obligations in the current plus two subsequent years. So we're all good. The second uh qual certification is qualified, which means the district may not meet those obligate, its obligations in the current or two subsequent subsequent years. And third, and certainly my least favorite of all of them is a negative certification, which means that the district is unable to meet its obligations for the remainder of the current fiscal year or the subsequent year. So current year or the following year. Um, and of course, whenever an organization, a school district gets to either a qualified certification, that really starts the process of a lack of going concern where the state comes in and identifies areas. Elliot has already talked about the fiscal health risk analysis that FICMAT did, but the goal at the point of being qualified is to turn turn around, like, we want to go back to being po- positive. We want to avoid at all costs getting to the point of having a negative certification.
So let's um, we can pause here for another round of questions. We have two more sections of the presentation after this, so just for for pacing purposes. One is Elliot will share again about the role of fiscal expert and where we could, where we need to start looking at a high level to um, you know, address our fiscal challenges and then I'll speak at a very uh more granular level about work I'm doing to uh as we start the budgeting process.
Perfect. And we'll start with Vice President Wiser Ward and then we'll see where other questions might land.
Thank you. Um, so this actually goes back, it's relating to the um multi-year projections and um I think slide eighteen with Dr. Clark and I and I, it relates to something that Commissioner Lamb said about um student enrollment and projections, but and also I had some questions about average daily attendance. So it it does seem like increasing our enrollment is if we can meet our goals, we can hopefully bring, I want to have families want to stay in the district and and get more folks here as opposed to leaving. I know we've also talked about attendance and seeing chronic absenteeism amongst demographics and a real need to focus on that for multiple reasons, but here's yet another one. Um, but my question is, I know in the the past year, the governor's budget amended the LCFF calculation to consider the greater of the school district's current year or prior year, average of the three prior years for uh average daily attendance rate, just because things were so wonky with COVID. Is is that gonna stay or are we worried that we're gonna be locked into a a not great number post-COVID if we are considered post-COVID? I I remember being feeling very.
Currently, um in addition to the the ability to use either prior year um ADA, or you could even go out, I think it was an average of the three years. What they've done is they also added on top of that because they noticed that in addition to the declining enrollment, that the ADA that's generated from that um enrollment, the percentages have been declining also. They've been decreasing. And so what they did is they added another um calculation that could be done. So if you were a district that was experiencing that, say, for instance, this year, um, it appeared as if the enrollment might be just about the same as it was last year, but not quite. So it brought the average up and then it really wasn't projecting any more money for the district, but what you were really losing on was your um re- reduction in ADA. So we were able to use that calculation. Basically, what you did is you went back over the three years to take the percentage of attendance you had from those three years and be able to average that as your current year percentage. So it allowed the district to be able to regain some of that funding. And from what I understand, I anticipate that's probably going to be in place. Um, I don't think that there was a um a date that it would go away at this point in time. So I think that you'll be fine, you know, having that in place for the next couple of years. And it's not just obviously for San Francisco, but statewide that's having that problem. I'm sorry, I can't hear anything.
Yes, it's answer your question, so it's not changing back.
Testing again.
It's rolling, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but last year, the major concern was that was what's called, one of many times the space has been used, the fiscal cliff, is that it was gonna I'm um the whole harmless is gonna lift and we're go, they're gonna go from immediately what our enrollment ADA was from two thousand nineteen twenty to two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. And that would have been a big drop.
I just want to underscore the word.
I just want to underscore the word soft landing. It's still landing.
Do we know?
Testing. Pam, are you able to hear us?
If, yes, I can.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, I believe that was the response to the first question. Are there other questions or comments? We'll continue to go.
Yeah, um, so I mean, just. Looking at the superintendent's school boards and budgets document, I mean, there's some kind of key categorical areas. And actually, the superintendent, I have a question for the superintendent, so I will hold. Did I think he did it on purpose?
We will come back to you, uh, Commissioner Tommy. Uh, other commissioners with comments or thoughts not for the superintendent or other staff at the moment.
Are we shocked to say that I have my questions?
Okay. Uh, seeing that we have things that are reliant on the superintendent, maybe we'll ask. It is the next set of slides, uh, Elliot's to okay superintendent.
Yeah, I had a question.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Um, well, I was just like, I mean, so we've been talking about enrollment. So one of the things that I've observed about our budget practices is we get very focused on the numbers and then we've. It's disconnected from the students' part of it. Um, and as a listener for a long time to budget conversations that. Was a frustration for me. And so when we talk about enrollment, it's not just like the system-wide enrollment numbers that I'm interested in understanding is what. We have a complicated system and it's like, there's the application, the assignment, the acceptance, and then the actual attendance in that ten-day count. And and that moves across our system. So our forecasts. Are how are squishy or somewhat. Maybe they're reliably unreliable. I don't know. So around enrollment, my question is. Um, when can we see, like, I I would like a system-wide understanding of what's happening, like through K through twelve coherence across our system. And then back to the students, it's also the mapping around programs, which goes to your baseline. Staffing and programmatic offers. So what are? We, what is the clarity of what is offered baseline? How is it staffed? And then where are there? Unique attributes like, I know we're having a budget conversation, but it also, you know, if you look at the the documents, the superintendent's school boards and budgets, like. It it really urges districts to move towards zero-based budgeting, which is something we've talked about, but haven't really. Um, had the fortitude or the bandwidth to do in earnest. Which does bring the budget all into one place, right? So. I I'm trying, like, I'm sitting here and I'm, and this is super, super helpful and I'm appreciating like the budget side of mapping, but. What's missing for me is is how, what the student experience is in that um, and how our system. Is different depending on where you are in that system, whether it's grade level. Location, particular school. So do you have? Um, as you are now, you know, acclimated. What are your thoughts on how that map to budget is going to unfold, especially around this introduction of interim goals and so forth? And the guardrails application. I mean, that's a big thing, but that's what like. I it can't all be done in a day, but I really think we need to start to reorient ourselves more explicitly around. The student experience and how our budget. Impacts our student experience and de facto our priorities.
Yeah, so I think, let me see, that's a big question, I think. And so. So are you saying, for example, like we've talked about and we're working on um, understanding what's offered at our high schools? As a, as an example.
As an.
Or like for, you know, the the elementary enrollment, really understanding like where, what's happening with our language programs. Right, that are that are offered.
But it's also, it's actually even more like basic for me. I don't know, maybe different, you know, other commissioners feel like they have this information, but. I can, you know. General enrollment numbers across our system is very different when you go to one site versus another. And trying to to acclimate and understand how our decision-making is. Imp- impacting our sites that are. Large versus small. I mean, I just don't know, like, I I guess, you know, this basic document that we were given, this four pager. That we were given superintendent, school boards and budgets, it tells me as a board commissioner, I'm supposed to understand enrollment. Programs and staffing and the budget all in one place in order to represent, you know, the community at large to ensure that our students are being served well. I feel like I'm getting a very good budget update. I appreciate that, like, and Anne Marie, you're doing a great job, by the way. Um, so, um, but I want to, I I need more, I I. Don't have confidence yet that I have the information that I need as a commissioner to understand enrollment, programs and staffing and the budget and all in one place. That's okay. So pin in it, I don't know, but like, i- is this resonating for others?
Yes.
I think it's related to this. Yeah, I agree.
And I just want to name. We've been in a recovery holding pattern for a while now. And I think this board in our different renditions over the last couple of years have been. Hungry for what the understanding the strategy. Um, now that we have a goals and guardrails that is a very clear. You know, direction that at times was, you know, it was unclear. It's clear now. We recognize it's going to take time. Of alignment of resources at this, and furthermore, I think. We're gonna need to demonstrate as a board, as superintendent to the community. How are we doing things differently? With the vision and the strategies. I would say that that's still at this time for me, missing. Uh, I haven't seen that emerge yet. Um, and again, not, thank you, Commissioner Matomedy, that. I don't see this square into the budget team. They've been holding it down for years now, when we almost. Had to have really state intervention because of our. Um, budget situation. And now I just really want to name that. It, this is the moment to pivot and I think. I am not comfortable with continued status quo because, as I've said privately to my colleagues. Um, we've delivered as a board with community around where. We need to go for our students in our expectations.
So I think, you know, what I think maybe when um, so I I hear what you're saying. I think when I get to my section, let me see if that helps illuminate. Uh, where.
Buy some time.
What's that?
Why said buy some time?
Yeah.
And I put a yes and on top of all of this.
Only only twenty minutes that we should get there soon. Yeah.
Um, I think uh, this ties into uh, maybe a larger conversation about the weighted student formula, right? And how that. I I think, a- again, going back to my time on the LCAP task force and parent advisory committees, there always seems to be a huge disconnect between. The planning at the district level, you know, that we do around LCAP versus how the CIPSs are looked at, you know, at the school site, right? And. Our school sites have multiple strategic documents they have to write. They have to, you know, they have, some of them have to write pitch plans. Some of them have to write C-Sase plans. Some of them have to. There's all the, and. And it's all very much siloed, right? So how are we using this process overall? As as we, in the zero-based budgeting process, as you mentioned, uh, weighted to all of it, how are we? Each school should have a master plan instead of all these silos. And so as much as we're doing this work at the district level. How is it being connected down to the school site level, which then does actually impact the student outcomes, right?
Um.
Okay, just wanted to acknowledge that um, AJ has their hand up in my unrequited to let them interject into the conversation. And just to, I think, let's also know we're a little bit past halfway. Our in our slide deck and we're at about eight fifteen time wise as well.
I'll just say, I um, yes, and uh, we need to do that. And you'll see some of that. We have a school site summit coming in March. That's where we present to this uh, to the ESP, the school site councils. What, where where we're going as a district and what needs to be incorporated in their school plans and you're going to see. Definitely the the uh, goals and guardrails in there, but I agree with you. There are too many plans we ask of our schools that are related, but not um. Uh, but really, but become duplicative.
Yes, exactly.
So our unmuted AJ, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer the the tension that. You all are voicing is a normal and natural tension. There are really two separate functions that need to happen during a budgetary conversation of this nature. On one hand. You are the fiduciaries on behalf of your community, and so you do need to deliver a budget that honors. Generally acceptable financial operational accounting practices. And the process that you're going through and what your budget team and what your state um, cheerleaders have to offer. Is really calibrated around that, that as you look at all those numbers, what they will tell you is, are we. Conducting business of. Our community and our taxpayers in a reasonable and well thought out manner. Completely separate and apart from that, what I generally find these particular budgetary. Um, engagements don't offer is the other task that you have to simultaneously accomplish, which is demonstrate that. The budget that you adopt is actually moving the needle, is actually calibrated with. Uh, the goals and the guardrails that you've said, that the investments you're making are actually designed to improve student performance. And and exactly what is the nature of those investments and what you've been presented now, my experience. Is pretty normal all across the country. It is just never designed to be the way, the system for. Um, clarifying that for boards is designed to be a system to help clarify what are your financial obligations? And how are those being honored in an appropriate manner? But until you begin to see. Investments of these resources in the context of what are the things that we want our students to know and be able to do. I think you're always going to be left with unclarity around, okay, so what? So we say we handle the money perfectly. So what, what difference does that actually make? That's a part of the conversation that I hear you all pushing to get to. And I think you'll need to get through this because you are legally required to do the. The good, the good, the good financial part, but I think you also have to do the effective. Uh, governance part, which is looking at how is this aligned with our, with the goals that we've set for our students.
So maybe on that note.
Can I ask AJ a question?
Oh, yeah.
Just about uh. Or do you see other districts when they're having budget? Discussions, how do do curriculum and instruction leadership and like the lead? Teams that oversee the schools participate in those discussions? Is that something that's visible?
It it, I I see that tends to depend on the size of the school system. So certainly with some of our smaller school systems that are ten, fifteen thousand students, then. It is. Almost not surprising to see principals show up and be part of that conversation. Um, but with school systems of your size, it tends to be um, cabinet level. Folks as well as your superintendent who are, who have gone out and done that engagement across. A hundred school sites and then synthesize that and bring it back and say, okay, in order to accomplish this goal. Here are the things that we've done that haven't worked and that we're gonna have to strategically abandon, that we're gonna move away from. Here are the things that have shown real promise that we're gonna try to do more of. So in order to accomplish goal one, here's what you can expect to see us do more of and. And more resources allocated to, and here's what that looks like in real dollars. And you see that we're driving more of our resources in that direction. Um, in the next fiscal year than we did in the last fiscal year. And for goal two, the same, and for goal three, the same, and so on and so forth. So that's just a very different conversation. The conversation you're having now is about how are the dollars aligned to the appropriate buckets and financial structures that the state expects. Separate and apart from that, you're gonna have to have a conversation, and I think it will have to include more of your instructional size inside team to at least design the conversation. Okay, how are we deploying the dollars in a way that's aligned with the goals that we've said?
Thank you.
So what I was, what I was gonna say is, why don't we, since there's this interest in where we're going with. The the planning, why don't we um, I have Elliot present the fiscal expert section? Take a few more questions on that and then I'll wrap us up with the uh, you know, actual budget planning based on our goals and guardrails.
Can I just ask a good question before we move on, tying that, tying budget back to VVGG?
Yeah, but that's what I was gonna speak to at the last part.
Okay.
Yeah, so maybe let me, since, cause that's, that's clearly what people see.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, so here you see me and Pam pick this particular slide. So I didn't, cause I don't dance very well. But first of all, I want to underscore that the real reason we are here. Is to do exactly what you're talking about. So the district has the tools to do what it needs for the students in the classrooms. We are not going to tell you how. That's not our job. It's not our wheelhouse. We are going to tell you what you need to do to have a balanced. And fiduciarily responsible, is that even a word, budget? You do get to marry that programs in the budget when you approve your LCAP. But we're not going to talk about the LCAP tonight. So we are fiscal experts. Pam was on and myself, we were appointed by CDE. Next slide, please. Because you had a structural deficit and let's go to the next slide, cause I think. I might have ordered these. So now let's, let's go down and we'll come back up. Let's talk about structural deficit. One more slide, please. Okay, so this poor young lady could be me, only it would be Netflix, my coffee and my ice cream. And it costs twenty dollars a day, twenty-one dollars a day, if you can add it up. But I only have twenty dollars a week. So at the end of a week, I'm a dollar short. At the end of two weeks, I'm two dollars short. And so on. So at the end of three weeks, my deficit is actually three dollars. And it continues unless I can control other functions. So next slide, please. Next slide. So yes, a structural deficit is a real concern. Cause it means you're spending down your resources that should be going to the children in classrooms on anything. It could be anything eating up that, those funds. Next slide, please. Yes, so I think we need to, um, and it means the district cannot. Meet its financial obligations current or the following two years. Without using its reserves one time dollars. And in this case, the district continues to be a high risk as measured by the fiscal health risk analysis. And Alicia, I think you're gonna have to go back up to lack of going concern. Okay, assignment of lack of going concern comes. The term going concern, if you're not familiar with it, is a standard accounting. Really term of art about a business that can keep going. It's going. It's not a concern. In terms of you're concerned about it, it's a concern in terms of it's a business, it's a concern. So why are you a lack of going concern and what does the state do about it? Because you've had positive budgets since your qualified budget, but you are still, at least in the estimation of. Your friendly assigned fiscal experts, you are still a a lack of going concern for a number of reasons. And you have a certain number of things that in your initial letter from the state, I don't have it probatum. But you were advised to freeze positions, to cut contracts, to put into place processes. The kinds of things we're talking about tonight. So as of now, and that is a year-to-year determination by CDE in this case. Determination by C D E in this case, it would normally be the county office. So you're a lack of going concern until your next budget comes along and they look at the same fiscal. Issues that were looked at in the fiscal health risk analysis, next slide please. So we'll skip down to. How do we fix this? Because it is fixable, otherwise. Um Pam and I wouldn't be here, the state wouldn't be talking to you. And um we wouldn't be spending a lot of time on this, so let's talk about the fixes and these are from a a high level. So generally, we're gonna talk about aligning schools and programs to enrollment and revenue projections. Establishing accurate enrollment projections, examining staff to align with enrollment and documenting business practices and procedures. Next slide please. So. I'm gonna qualify this in a minute, so hang on. You have lots of schools and lots of programs. I am not going into what you need to do with consolidation or anything other than that. But any business looks at how it distributes its resources to its clients or customers. You have lots of schools and lots of different programs, it is going to be critical. To look at, and I think this is what you're talking about when you talk about the effectiveness of your funding models. Your M T S F, your W S F, and even in your L cap, what are those programs? Are they effective? Are you getting the dollar return that you need to? To get the student returns, next slide please. So you need to review programs and focus on the very best and the most cost effective ones. We're not gonna tell you what those are or how to do it, but I think that is a critical process. Totally aligned with your visions, values, goals and guardrails. Because if your visions, values, goals and guardrails are realistic, they're going to happen be it within. The frame of reference. Of the resources that you have, next slide please. One of the things that you have in your budget are a lot of open and unfilled positions. And I will go back to my first. Um meeting unofficially that I sat in and you didn't really know I was there. Listening to this board about enrollment projections and your fall reassignment of teachers. And a major concern at that time, that was about a year and a half ago. Was that you could have been overstaffed in many positions. And you were paying for an enrollment that was higher than what your actual enrollment was. So it's very critical that you review these positions. If they're in the budget, they're creating an artificial ending balance. And they need to be aligned with what you are doing, next slide please. Also, and I think that Dr. Wayne will be talking about this. You need to look at places where your budget can be cut, and I think he'll be talking, I'm not gonna. Project what he's talking about, they're not my slides, but you do need to look at places where the budget can be cut. Next slide please. This is my favorite slide. So we have Goldilocks and sometimes the porridge is too hot. Sometimes it's too cold and sometimes it's just right. I've been involved in pupil enrollment and demographic projections. Over, I hate to say it, but nearly the last forty years. Every single demographer wants to hit that sweet spot. Where you project the enrollment or whatever you're projecting perfectly. But there are a lot of factors and. What I do know is I know your district is looking at bringing on a demographer that is going to look at. I think some of the things Commissioner Matomedy was talking about in terms of where students are, where they come from. Where your student population is declining and where it isn't. Those are going to be important and while I will say you can hope for the best. You need to plan for the worst. As a school superintendent, I always wanted to know what's the worst case scenario? And it's very difficult to project declining enrollment. A good demographer will look at the new foundations being poured, but you can't look at how many moving vans are leaving the district. So hitting that sweet spot is critical and it's critical to know. The basis of your enrollment projections, next slide please. One of the things that we have found is that. You have, because of a lot of factors, COVID, not the least of them. The fact that you're part of a larger personnel system, you're a large district, there's a lot of turnover. Standard operating procedures need to be documented. So that people from one one generation of worker analyst, whatever it is. To the next understands the same processes. Um that's critical, it's a recommendation we've made, and I know the business office is working on that. Almost literally as we speak, so I think I have a contract to look at. I have homework, next slide please. So, you know, this actually goes with the one above, but I like this, well, I don't like this slide, but it's what happened. During COVID, we lost in California a lot of students. And we really don't know where they went. I was talking to the business manager, my former district. They make calls, they look for where did the families go and they just literally cannot track the students. So we as a state, we as educators and you as a district. Need to really look at what are the long term effects on your student population of COVID? And all the other factors that drive. Your population of students in the district, not to mention that the state has lost its population over the past two years. And the demographics are that your your birth rates are lower. Than they had and they've been going continually lower in this state for a long time, so those are all factors. That your demographer once on board will take a look at, next slide please. Okay, next slide. Pardon? Yeah, so what I have to say is this is difficult work. It's good work and it's essential work. So that when it comes down to it, you know the resources you have. And you can pinpoint them to the programs that best serve the children in the district. We are all about instructional outcomes, really not the dollars and cents, but as fiscal. People, our our goal is to make sure that the dollars and cents. Become your foundation for building excellent educational programs. Next slide. Thank you, we're delighted to be here, not for that reason, uh but we enjoy being with you. I think I speak for Pam, I don't know if you wanna mention anything Pam, but um we truly enjoyed working with your district. Um I have to also say kudos to Anne Marie Gordon, she has stepped up from day one and. I think told you truths that were uncomfortable and we're here to sometimes reinforce those truths. And also delighted to work with Dr. Clark, who brings just a wealth of experience from both cities and counties.
Right, so. Um and thank you Elliot and Pam, so this uh again, it's been a year now that we've we've the district's been. Year and four months. Year and four months, okay, and so there's still work to do, so maybe five minutes of questioning right here if there's any questions. And then I'll share my piece and then we'll wrap up.
Any questions specifically to Elliot and Pam at this point in time? Commissioner, I've seen why don't we transition to the last part of the presentation?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. President focus, um I was just curious back on the slide and trying to go. It was the 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 lack of going concern, there was the bottom bullet point. Assigned thick mat to review teacher hiring practices and retention rates, is that's, I don't recall that being part of thick mats scope.
That is a generic list of what the state can do. So I mean that in in essence could still happen, but. The initial requirement was through the fiscal health risk analysis.
Thank you, um so just saying, we wanted to share a little bit about the current um. Governor's proposal, just so you have and the public has an idea of. Um revenue for next year, proposed revenue for next year, and then budget planning that we're doing, which I think we'll get to some of what you you all have. Uh asked about, uh so if you go to the next slide. Anne Marie will share the uh high level overview of the governor's proposal, what it means for us.
So the governor's state budget proposal uh was released in the middle of January and what you'll see here is that. There's sort of, it's a mixed but overall neutral update on the financial forecast, there's not. A really strong definitive direction of ticking upwards or downwards uh for next year. And so the bullet points sort of counter one another where the proposition ninety eight guarantee for next year is lower. Than what we saw when the budget wasn't acted, but the cost of living adjustment or COLA has increased. And then that's specifically, and that will impact um our L C F F outlook. For the restricted side of the house or the restricted side of our general funds. Um the one time arts, music and instructional materials discretionary block grant, which was an allocation again as part of the state's enacted budget. Was reduced, um so that is one area where we've begun planning but haven't fully programmed out the funds, but we have a cut. Uh to that total amount that's available. Um but on the flip side, a a number of other of new ongoing programs have been maintained. And a couple of those called out here are the TK expansion, right, transitional kindergarten. And the expanded learning opportunities program, which both uh will be incorporated into ongoing revenue uh moving forward.
So then as we uh next slide, as we get to our planning for this year, you've heard us talk a lot this evening and over the past several months about needing to align to our vision, values, goals and guardrails. Also, as we go through the process, I do wanna speak to wanting to have some stability in our process and for next year uh for next year, just because. In my listening and learning time, I heard how difficult it was last year. The budgeting process and the reductions that we need to be that needed to be made and. So the governor's, you know, proposals overall neutral, we see we're gonna have to make difficult decisions in the coming years, but feel like. Want to do that in a way that promotes some stability rather than uh again, what happened last year, which was such a uh. You know, sudden reduction for people, particularly at our school sites where they they felt it. And then also just increase the transparency about. How we're uh making budget decisions, what our budget, what's in our budget um and all of that, so. If you go to the next slide. As we get to budget planning um season, I think it's important that if we're talking about doing new ways of business, that needs to start. Uh and be modeled by leadership and you've done a a good job of that by really changing how we do business at the board. Meetings and I I want to do the same by demonstrating how we're budgeting and for me, my budget is. Uh while I'm in charge of the whole district, you know, I most closely manage the central office and particularly the superintendent's office and so. Uh as we're planning to look uh the budget for the central office, you hear some, I you see some guidelines that that I've listed here. I just wanna um highlight. Uh one key point about, I've heard a lot how, you know, the district office, you know, we're we're here and I. I know people, I mean, I I, you know, the staff that's here, when I see them and talk to them, we're here to serve our students, our staff and our families, but. Engagement with the district office can often be challenging because it's not clear what people's roles are or who's accountable for what, so part of the. The planning for next year is to make sure it's clear uh whether we're be able, we're able to answer those questions clearly. If you go to the next slide. And so, uh as I'm doing the planning around the central office and particularly in, you know, the superintendent's office. Uh I'm doing this based on information that's been gathered from a var- variety of sources. Uh so can you see them up here, uh I do wanna speak to the the um, you know, city also conducted an analysis of expenditures. That uh comparing us to other districts and while some of it is hard to to compare, definitely highlighted that there were. Areas that we over invested, I mean, we spent more than the median on central office and areas where we spent less than the the median. Uh and so that plus, you know, looking at other districts, how they're organized, as well as other listening, learning is informing the the planning. So if you go to the next slide. Here's some specific actions that I'm taking, starting in the superintendent's office to then set the stage for budget planning over the next two months at the district office. Um and so first I'm reorganizing senior leadership. And so you know, I started the year, um we had some deputy positions that were vacant, I didn't fill them and I've decided to eliminate the de- the deputies. Part to flatten the hierarchy and also reducing senior leaderships, again, those who report directly to me by twenty percent. Also really think we need to consider, um this is the whole point, so this is your point about the boys, we're planning to the goals and and guardrails and what we're trying to accomplish. We can't do everything. What I found at the district office is there are things that existed, again, because somebody started some I something and it and at the time it made sense to do and. And so then it got staffing, it got a budget, grants were found to support it, but we haven't actually paused in a while and said. What might we need to either put on hold or even strategically abandon as we move forward towards our goals, so really looking to do that. Uh throughout the district office, so one uh department that's under me is the I lab. Um and this is a a place where I've heard over the years is that amazing work supporting innovation in the district and at schools. But when we think about where we are right now and our goals are focusing on, you know, how do we create a strong foundation? Um I don't know that we need a a department at the district office working in this area. Uh we need innovation happening, but it needs to be, you know, around our goals and around uh at at the school site and so. Uh again, doing this is um but looking at what I uh again, what I manage, but also then thinking. In the district office, we need to be asking ourselves these type of questions and so. Uh if you go to the next slide, then I'll I'll also have a clear organizational charts, but so I'm going to then. Ask the departments uh to do the same thing that I just did. So in our budget planning process over the next two months, we're going to be requiring departments, except for general administration and plant operations, and I'll speak to that in a moment. To go through the process of looking at vacancies, um reviewing consultant contracts, identifying where there's duplicative efforts. You know, seeing how they could use their varied resources and to do the the same kind of thing that I'm doing, which is saying. How do we align and how do we also reduce expenditures where possible because we see we need to go through that process? And we wanna start it, you know, here before having the sites go through that. Um and then also, um so you heard me say planted minute, uh uh general administration of plant operations because. While we over invest in some areas such as instructional supervision, you know, or in the superintendent's office was an area that was identified, we have under invested. Compared to other districts in those two areas that and so that's like human resources, payroll, buildings and grounds, and I think that. Um analysis, you know, uh brings data to what we visibly see every day, when we see. That our schools aren't as maintained as well as they need to be, when we see our our human resources is struggling to keep up with the demands. And so the for them, I'm asking them, what's that, you know, what do you need to to? So we can be a a well functioning district that's meeting the needs of our students, families and staff, so a little different question for those departments. Everybody else, I'm asking that the first question, so then um if you go to the next slide. Um so that's the district office budget planning, so what you'll see in next steps is we'll present our second interim um in March. But we host the school site summit and so at the school site summit, we're asking that they incorporate. We're expecting that they incorporate into the school planning process, the vision value goals and guardrails and how. Plans that they're doing are are aligned to that and then, so for example, you said we have a lot of plans, so we have C S A S. Uh this is our coordinated um early and a comprehensive coordinated early intervention system, some of us were at a full day Saturday uh retreat about it. And it because we're under C S A S because we disproportionately refer student, black students to special education. What our literacy goal, I've set an interim go- uh goal for our third grade literacy specifically to support. Uh uh to to um monitor progress of black student achievement, starting in kindergarten. Like, so the work that's being done. For C S A S should not be a separate plan, it should be what's in our school plan to support the. Kindergartners at our school who we know we have now a target to improve their literacy. Um when they come into uh in into whatever school they're, so that's that's the idea that and and so. Um hopefully this section gives you a window into uh. The planning that will happen definitely at the district office, but throughout the system to get more aligned to goals and guardrails and to use our resources efficiently and effectively. Uh and make sure that they're, you know, most importantly, going to the classroom in our schools where our students are learning.
Thank you Superintendent, uh so I think we'll take comments from commissioners, uh I think we've been doing as far as giving folks opportunity to speak. Then going around and asking folks to limit their kind of first comments to one and then we kind of come back around for additional comments. We'll start with Commissioner Fisher.
Well, first of all, I appreciate the focus on the coherence of one plan, you know, as you've been saying.
Well, first of all, I appreciate the focus on the coherence of one plan, you know, as you've been saying, coherence, great, wonderful. I think my, my concern about closing open positions, though, I, this year in particular, we've had a lot of staff who've been pulled from the central office into school sites to close vacancies. And many of those departments are burning, you know, and we see, you know, we don't have coaches supporting schools. And, and so I think that's some of what we're seeing, you know, we don't have special education supervisors and content specialists, you know, helping. And so we're seeing that, we're feeling it in our schools, right? So how, how is that, when we review the vacancies, when, would you consider someone who's been moved from central office into a school site to, is that a vacancy? Is that what you mean? Or what, what do you?
So really, the vacancy is actually the one at the school site where it's listed in our, in our books as the, the vacancy. And so in that sense, no, that position isn't a vacancy, but there are other vacant positions at the district office. And so I think that, that's similar to how you're going to expect me to come and say, here's how this, you know, huge billion-dollar budget matches, matches are, are, are the direction we're wanting to go. Each department, each school has their own budget that needs to answer the same question. So that's why there's, you're not hearing me say all vacant positions will be eliminated, or even this percentage of vacant positions will be eliminated. Yet we need to go through the process to look. Then they're going to make recommendations and, and we'll review centrally on what, you know, but what, what we'll do. But as an example, our literacy, let's take literacy. So you're right, literacy coaching right now lives in, in at least three different departments and places. That is something that I've asked our head academic officer to look at, like, how do we have this be more coherent and aligned? In doing that, we might be able to provide support in a way that's more efficient and we'll, we'll realize some savings either in positions or, or budget, but, but looking for recommendations around that.
Yeah, I was wondering about the strategic abandonment aspect that I was wondering if there's going to be a criteria that's to be established and figure out like which programs to abandon, which programs not.
A great question. So right now, the, the general guidance has been, how is it supporting our goals and guardrails, in particular our goals for student learning, when we're talking about the different programs. But we are going to need to push further than that. So I, to, so like I said, when, when looking in my department, I mean, I can make some connections, but overall it's not like clearly aligned to, did these activities support third-grade literacy or these activities for an eighth-grade math? That's the, the, the standard we'll be looking at. But we needed to find it a little bit more because you know, arguments could be made for various different, different activities about, you know, how closely they're connected to, to, you know, literacy, math, or college and career readiness.
Um, thank you. It, what is the timing on, so when we get the second interim in March? And do you expect that some of the, at least the superintendent office budgeting, the central office budgeting will be reflected in that second interim?
No, because that's not what the second interim does. Yeah, second interim's really reporting on.
Well, we've already started. Okay.
But I've heard from the board, I mean, we haven't figured out the mechanics, but I've heard from the board, you don't want on June seventh at the public hearing to be the first time you see the budget. So I heard that message. We'll figure out again, how we're gonna, we're gonna incorporate that. If maybe we need another budget workshop like this, we'll, we'll, we'll determine how to do that.
I have a, a comment or just consideration, actually strong recommendation.
I like how that evolves.
Because I said it out loud, I needed to, yeah. One thing is, you know, I understand that school site, the school summit is an opportunity where school sites work with their, you know, school site councils and look at their budgets for the remainder of the year. What I want to highlight is the importance of, you know, how you as superintendent will, you know, share a summary of the process of getting input from families, staff, administrators, and educators in those developments beyond the school site summit, because that is a very narrow engagement of leaders and parents. And so that's something that I want to, you know, want to acknowledge the importance of that community input and being able to share back, because that's going to be part of that, right, is that the community will need to understand timeline, process, where is, there's those points of engagement for them, because otherwise what I want to avoid is when we get to the final sprint and then community is, you know, surprised. And that's always the last thing we want to do is that.
So for the, yeah, so I, the school site summit, I think I remember being at some of these twelve years ago when I was here, I think they've been around for, for a while. That's really more one-way information. It's more, here's where the district's going. But I've heard the feedback again at various sources that our LCAP needs to be much more informed by the school sites and the school site council. So you're making a recommendation as one of seven in a meeting that's not action-oriented, but as superintendent, I get to direct staff and I've already directed, we have a new LCAP coordinator and said, you know, we need to make sure that in this LCAP process. Oh, there you go. I didn't even know he's here. I'm glad he's here, new LCAP coordinator. He can tell that I've already directed that we need to make sure that the school site councils aren't forming the LCAP in a coordinated way. So it's not actually going to be at the school site. The school site summit itself will be the start of that, but then there will be a process, correct, for, for school site councils to give us feedback as we're developing our plans through June.
So my point of clarification then is beyond school site councils, because that is a very limited group of individuals that are, while certainly they are elected by their school communities, but I just think that's going to be really important is to, that's part of the transparency, that's part of community input that is going to be important to include.
And I think sites do do that or have done in the past. So when we did our budgeting at Cleveland, we involved the community in the iterative process over time.
I think it'd be sporadic. It's very, very.
So I really want to commend you, Matt, for this work. So historically, we didn't have any deputies until two thousand and six, when we had five or 10,000 more students. And our outcomes have not improved since then. So to have three deputy positions essentially cut, I think be a good way to go. Do you have like a ballpark amount of savings you want to project for us that when we cut in central office?
Not yet, but. No, but, and I say that because, and I say that not yet, because I'm engaging other departments in this, in this.
I'll just briefly echo my last previous two colleagues' comments. So that echo Commissioner Sanchez's gratitude for the work on this. And I think it's, I think it's a really important and great start. And I think really looking forward to the org charts. I know some of our city supervisors are too, as they said a few weeks ago. So that'll be really good in parents in general. And then just, since we're making suggestions along lines of official lands, I do think, you know, if, if the school site council, summer or other places to begin engaging school communities, also on the central services that are going to allow them to achieve their goals, right? Because I think that's the question is, you need to improve third-grade literacy, because that's our goal. What do you need to do that? What certain central services are working? What central services aren't working, right? I think that kind of information would be really, really valuable. And I know that we as board members will probably hear it. So if there was like a, a way to say, you know, hey, folks in school community, you know, like for them to say, this is what we need essentially, and maybe this is the stuff that, that we don't, that isn't as useful.
To build, yes, yes. I love this, how we're building on each other. So yes, thank you. To build on that, how does that turn into an iteration of our value, our, our goals and our guardrails in particular? I think following on that with the third grade literacy. What I'm hearing from many folks who are in the, the curriculum review committees, for example, is there are some concerns about how we're going to be able to implement a new curriculum without ongoing training, ongoing coaching, tons of front-loaded professional development, things like that. And so I don't necessarily see that written into the guardrails, but I think there's an opportunity to write it in, or maybe it is in the, in the implementation guardrail. I'm just, I, I'm, I'm wondering how, when we're getting this iterative feedback, is it also going to impact the VVG G moving forward?
It should. And this goes back to like, I think what we're saying around establishing the baseline, like what I'm curious to see, and this is, and again, this is, it's not all going to happen overnight, right? But like I said, we have literacy coaches in three different departments, but we also have are, are people working on literacy in various departments, right? But also like, we have professional development, we've done. Like, how much are we spending on professional development? And then how much of that professional development is going towards gorillas and guardrail? Then there's a question of how effective is that professional development? But first even just seeing where that is. And I think, yeah, iter is a good word, like, or maybe it's like peeling the onion. We're going to get deeper and deeper of analyzing and understanding to then put forward plans and that, you know, that, that makes sense. But you're absolutely right. Like, we're not going to reach our goal without support for teachers. But then this is, I think, to Commissioner Alexander's point, we should also ask teachers, what's been the best support over the last ten years? Because I think that's why, when I talk about stability, I have heard there, there were cuts at the district office where people they're like, wait a second, you know, this was helpful to us, but there wasn't this process that I'm describing, again, out of necessity, but there wasn't this process I'm describing that, that to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will see if there's any additional questions from city delegate. We did have one commissioner, I believe, that didn't add anything that you have with more questions.
I'd like to think I added something. I am just, because I am a process person, I am desiring kind of a, a map of our, how are we going to have the conversation of budget to goals? Not, not just at the board level, of course, but like with community, with our school sites and schools, and I mean, like the, the community of the school sites, including staff. Because I'm really, I mean, I'm stuck on this thing of, and I think absent all of us being aware of enrollment, meaning where our kids are, where, what programs are being offered and where, and how that maps to staffing. It's really hard to have system, systems conversations, because we each and all of us come to the conversation with our experience of the district. And it's for each and every one of us, it's bigger than just our own experiences. And it's, it's, so I'd like to understand when and how we will be updated around enrollment and programs and staffing, like in, and when I say that, it's more than just the high school catalog. I mean, it's, it's the K through, or the pre-K through twelve coherence in our district and being able to understand what he, whatever kid's going to get and, and where the opportunities are for engagement in different kinds of programs and enrichment. Like, we don't even have standard practice around enrichment or before care or after care. And all of these things impact how we make decision-making. So before June seventh, like, what, what are the kinds of things that that are going to be start, starting to be built out that we can see more of going forward? And, you know, the school, school sites summit, I mean, I thought like actually town halls, Zoom town hall halls and stuff like that, that was one bonus during the pandemic. It was like an easy way to reach a lot of people. Or there's different ways to communicate, it just that we haven't really been doing. So.
Well, we just want to acknowledge the time and release the student delegate as we are here.
But Isabel, if you have another question before you leave, I can hold an answer.
Well, and, and I, I mean, I think the answer is going to be, again, we will, I, I understand that the direction and the requests and they will need to be, you know, shown over the next few months, what that looks like. Really next eighteen months, because like I said, some of it's going to go like next year with budget planning.
Okay. And I think with that, we will end questions from commissioners and we will go to public comment for the dedicated people who have stuck with us through it all.
Does, does staff want us to anything?
You can go ahead. You have no card though, so I don't think so.
Yes, this is all, oh, great. I love these meetings where like, I'm greatly outnumbered by, by, by all of you. First of all, I just want to thank you all for this work. I think this is great and I think this is really, really important. You know, I want to say that we didn't get here by accident, right? We got here through the way we, a district conducted business. And so I'd like to suggest that there are three ways that we can change the way we do our business from a, from a behavior perspective to be very valuable. The first is hold ourselves accountable for results, not intentions. Hold ourselves accountable for outputs, the outcomes, not inputs. For example, if you look at the MTSS, how the MTSS is defined literally says, we increase equity by allocating more resources. That's not true. We allocate more resources in order to achieve equity. It's the achievement of equity that we want, not the allocation of resources. That's the first point. The second point, tell the truth. It should be a district that really tells the truth. If you saw the rap that I read, I, I read in the examiner yesterday, even I had some things to say about what the district's been doing, I won't repeat them. But that's just something as a district, we need to tell the truth. And the third thing is let's actually be fearless, which is one of our values. There are hard decisions we're going to have to make, but if we make them well, we might just save money, they'll improve outcomes. Let's do the things that need to be done, not the things that other people want us to do, not the things that are easy, not the things that protect ourselves or the people we like, but the things we need to do to improve outcomes. Thank you all again for this great work.
For those on Zoom, please raise your hand if you care to speak to the workshop budget item this evening. Never be repeated in Spanish and Chinese as well. Yeah, if you can go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
All right. Oops, I lost it. Sorry. I just want to thank you guys for your work here. I know it's a long road ahead. You're making some good progress. But yeah, we have a long way to go and keep up or keep driving us the right way. Thanks.
Who's public comment?
With that, we will conclude public comment. We will recess to close session. And we will proceed from it.
I was just going to ask if stuff, if anything, I wanted to. I'm sorry.
I think, let's just appreciate, if you had any final words, I'll just appreciate. Thank you. Dr. Clark and Elliot and Anne Marie for, yeah. And Pam, thank you, Pam. And AJ, he did join us. Yeah, thank you all for your hard work.
And with that, we will reset the closed session and then we will, thank you all very much.
Okay, we will reconvene to open session following our conference and closed session, and we will adjourn.
And we will adjourn at nine fifty six P M.